Sir, I invite you to spend a moment in your own quiet silence of preparation of your heart for this moment today. Amen. And the pledge to our nation's flag, Mr. Pierce.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the pledge to the Texas flag, written originally by General Taylor, General Oliver Weaver.
Please follow me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Amen.
Thanks, sir.
I didn't know I was that old.
Item two on the agenda is the opportunity for members of the public to suggest any comments or additional comments to the board. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the board? Seeing none, turn to the chancellor's report.
I have none today.
Hearing none. Item four, Earth Science Program, Dr. Foskin.
Chairman Towers, distinguished board members, Chancellor Yanopoulos, and my fellow attendees, good afternoon. I'm Dr. Andrea Foskin, Department Chair, Science and Agriculture. I appreciate the opportunity today to offer an academic program update that's currently occurring within my department. Note that each of you, in front of you, have three handouts related to this update. As previously discussed by Dr. Fisher during his academic programs update delivered during your March Board workshop, field study continues to evolve, particularly within the natural sciences and the physical sciences arena. As evidence, as displayed on screen on the current slide and in your packet as well, geology and environmental science, two separate degree programs, have grown more and more similar and overlapping over the recent years. If you hold the current ASIS degree plans for geology and environmental science side by side, the similarities will become more and more evident. For example, shown in green, you'll see that both degrees require Geology 1403, which is physical geology. Also in red, you're going to see that they require ENBR 1401, Environmental Sciences, and also an overlapping dose of different courses in chemistry, physics, and biology as seen in yellow on your screen. Meanwhile, during this same recent field of study evolution period, earth science has evolved into the study of the earth plus the universe that surrounds it. Earth science encompasses numerous fields of studies, and it covers a wide range of topics which is applicable to several aspects of our everyday life. It is literally concerned with the solid earth and the interactions that occur between the atmosphere, the water, and land. So to that end, geologists study solid parts of the earth, the materials that compose the earth, the evolution of structures, different landforms, and processes that constantly evolve over time, as well as natural disasters such as mudslides, earthquakes, and volcanoes. Oceanographers, on the other hand, they study the earth's water, as in oceans, their evolving ecosystems and marine life, while meteorology is a very, very practical science which studies the earth's atmosphere and how processes in the atmosphere would then determine the earth's overall weather patterns and climate patterns. Now, environmental scientists, they bring it all together. They are the problem solvers. They employ a more holistic approach, which tap into the knowledge of various facets of earth science to understand how to work with the earth's resources and how to support life and sustain life with those earth's resources, like minimizing the environmental effects of mining and pollution, or coming up with different ways to produce sustainable energy and other policies associated with the energy production. So in essence, earth science is a marriage of various intricately connected life and physical science disciplines, including geology and environmental science amongst other Therefore, as pictured on this slide and on page three of your handouts package, the recent Curriculum Review Committee approved the departmental request to combine portions of the ASIS geology and environmental science degree plans into a single associative science in earth science degree. That's one degree with multiple options. So as seen on the bottom right, noted by the purple arrows, students will retain options. They can choose a geology or an environmental science discipline focus that's driven by their individual interests as well as their future career goals. Central Texas College academic departments strive to deliver relevant programs to prepare our graduates from matriculation to further post-secondary study and as they pivot into the workforce as well. In fact, for our graduates transferring to four-year schools, the University of Texas at San Antonio renamed its bachelor's level geology degree to geosciences, which broadly encompasses earth sciences, while retaining a heavy emphasis on geology. Similarly, the University of Houston also offers a bachelor's level earth sciences degree, also retaining a heavy geology focus. As you look around several four-year institutions in Texas, you will notice that many of them do offer bachelor's level, master's level, and sometimes even doctorate level degrees in geosciences, all retaining different concentration focus, either in geology, environmental science, or geophysics for that matter. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to offer an update today, giving you a glimpse into the recently approved curricular change occurring within the Science and Ag Department. We expect this to be your fall semester 2023 rollout. I stand by ready to address any questions or comments that you may have.
Anyone have a question or comment for Dr. Foskin?
So would, and maybe you said that and I didn't grasp it, but will the environmental services and the geology remain, and you're adding the earth sign, or is it going away and you're using just earth sign? I mean, not just, because it has, like you say, it has all the components in it. So are we switching, or are we?
So we are doing away with the existing environmental science and geology programs and instead using a merged earth science program, which still, where students still have the ability to choose either of those two options.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. From an administrator's point of view, I think this is outstanding, that you've been proactive in your, with your, you and your team with your curriculum. So thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Chancellor. As things continue to evolve over time, we take a good look at what's happening in universities and other community colleges in our area and make appropriate changes as needed.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
Mr. Sunval, you have a report for us from the Legislative Session.
Chairman Towers, CTC Board of Trustees, good afternoon. As you know, the 88th Legislature Regular Session ended on May 29 of '23. But later that evening, Governor Abbott released a proclamation calling for a special session of the Texas Senate to convene on June 2 to focus on bills related to property taxes and border security. There were about 11,870 bills filed during the session. The Senate filed 3,522, and the House filed 8,285. CTC tracked 785 bills prioritizing appropriations, employee benefits, college operations, college police, taxes, the Texas Public Information Act, and establishing a state system to oversee and fund community colleges. The legislature sent 90 bills that we tracked to the governor. Thirty-eight of those were House bills and 52 were Senate bills. I'm going to give you a brief on some legislation that's impacting post-secondary education. Again, these are just briefs, and they're just highlights of some bills that will be affecting us a little more critically than the others. I sent to the executive, CTC executives, a draft of bills a week or so ago, and later on today, I will send them almost the final version of the bills, of the 90 bills. First one is House Bill 8. As you recall, that changes our funding system, and that was filed by Representative Gary Van Dever, and relates to the administration coordination and support of public higher education, specifically including public junior colleges. That's our state finance program, and it's also advancing the advanced career in education. The earliest effective date for that is September the 1st. However, there are some provisions in there that, in the Education Code and the Government Code, which is basically the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board providing rules already, that begins six, well, it actually began 6/9/23. House Bill 8, as you know, awards most state funds based on student outcomes, such as credentials earned in high-demand fields, transfer rates to universities, and the number of high school students who earn at least 15 credits in dual enrollment programs. More funding is directed to colleges based on their enrollment of certain student groups, including adult learners and economically disadvantaged and academically disadvantaged students. Colleges are measured against their own progress on student metrics, success metrics, rather than competing with each other for a fixed pool of funds, which is what we normally did. Of course, institutions with less funding support from property local taxes also will receive a base amount for operating and instruction costs, offer some special financial programs to smaller and rural institutions. That helps them in that respect. The bill also establishes the financial aid for SWIFT transfer program to provide free dual enrollment courses to low-income high school students. The 2024 and 25 budget will give state community colleges districts more than $2.2 billion in formative funding over two years compared to the $1.8 billion under the old formula. Chancellor, you want to add anything on House Bill 8?
No, I think all 50 community colleges were in favor of that. They put up, the pot was $651 million, and a pot that we often go in and grab, and we're not, we're not fighting each other for that base funding. And they made us whole for the base funding here, so it was a good bill.
Okay.
And the governor did sign it.
Yes, he did. House Bill 3033, that bill relates to the Attorney General decisions under the public information law. The earliest effective date for that bill is September 1, and that bill basically provides a timelier release of information subject to public information law by implementing a number of safeguards. It includes requiring a governmental body to act within 30 days of the issuance of an opinion by the Attorney General, and that's following the request from a government body. It also establishes that a holiday by the governing board of an institution of higher education is not a business day of the institution of higher education. So that's on that bill. A House Bill 3440 is relating to the governmental bodies required to post on the Internet agendas for meeting under the, under the open meetings law, and that effective date is 9/1/23, and it basically requires certain governmental bodies and economic development corporations, including, it says, the governing board of a junior college, junior college or junior college district, including the district that has changed the name of in accordance to Chapter 130 of the Education Code, that in addition to other place at which notices or agenda of a meeting is required to be posted by Subchapter C, which is a notice of the meeting, to also concurrently post notice of meetings on the Internet website of the governmental body. And we talked about that at lunch a little bit, and it could have been a little bit more worse, that little more added to it. Senate Bill 17, as you know, is relating to public higher education reform. That earliest effective date is January the 1, 2024, and it basically prevents public colleges and universities in Texas from having diversity, equity, and inclusion offices or policies and mandate, or policies and mandating staff to take diversity training or provide statements describing their commitment to diversity. It's got various other things, however, basically that one, it requires also that the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, in coordination with institutions of higher education, shall conduct a biannual study. So that requires a report from us and the coordinating board. We're currently seeking more clarity on this bill because it's being looked at very closely by all institutions, particularly a lot of their attorneys, to see there's other things that are missing that the bill may require. Senate Bill 18 relating to tenure and employment status at public institutions of higher education in this state. I know Central Texas College doesn't have tenure. However, we're looking at that very closely, and what I found today, it basically says that only an institution and governing board, on the recommendation of the institution's chief executive officer and the university system chancellor, if applicable, may grant tenure. Now, that sounds like it's basically a university bill with tenure. However, it also states, in the Education Code 61.003, includes us in there, and that each governing board of an institution of higher education shall adopt policies or rules and procedures regarding tenure, even if the policy simply reaffirms that the institution does not grant tenure. That's us, we don't grant tenure. And of course, we're also seeking more clarity on this bill as well. Senate Bill 867 relating to the recipients of opioid antagonist under the opioid antagonist program. And that also adds, its earliest effective date is 6/17/23. That adds that institutions of higher education, again, were included in there, that the Health and Safety Code to the list of institutions and individuals likely to be in a position to respond to an opioid crisis or overdose, and thus allowed to be provided opioid antagonist by the Executive Commissioner of the Health and Human Services Commission as part of the opioid antagonist program. They're handling that, and they'll let us know how they wish to handle that. Senate Bill 999 relating to the requirement that provides, that providers of active shooter training at public institute schools and institutions of higher education obtain a certificate issued by the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. And it basically prohibits public school districts and public institutions of higher education from contracting for this training without first getting a certification certified by TECO, which is the Texas Commission of Law Enforcement Education. Senate Bill 1565 relating to policy frameworks of research security established by public institutions of higher education. That was, earliest effective date is September the 1, and it's the governing board of each institution of higher education shall establish a policy framework that promotes secure academic research at the institution while mitigating the risk of foreign espionage and interference. The governing board of a university system must establish a separate policy framework for each institution of higher education under the governing board's management and control. And although it says the university system, and looking at the code 61.003 and various other codes that are education, it includes public junior colleges as well. Senate Bill 2350 relating to the voter approval tax rate used to calculate the unused increment rate of taxing unit for at-bellarm tax purposes. Earliest effective date is 6/18/23, and this one basically amends the Tax Code to establish it for the purposes of calculating a taxing unit's unused increment rate for property tax purpose. The unit's voter approval tax rate in the applicable preceding tax year be used in the calculation of the rate adopted by the unit during the applicable preceding tax year. That's all I have that are highlighted here, and I'll take any questions.
Anyone?
As you can see, Rudy has been very busy. Yeah, and Rudy doing a good job of keeping up with these. Just so you'll know, as these bills roll out and affect us as a community college, TAC will take those on and roll out. Dr. Carter has been levying into TAC, so she's going to replace me with the TAC board. They also, the TACC TA, Board for Trustees Association, will be addressing some of these as they come down. So the one big one under Senate Bill 8 is that we need the metrics for how we collect that data and send it in so we get our dollars out of the state. House Bill 8. And we're going to be doing that as soon as the coordinating board figures out how to do that, and Dr. Garrett will be informed immediately on maybe a new or different approach to reporting all those metrics. So it's a good bill, so thank you.
Yes, our deputy chancellors are very good at looking at all those bills, and they've been looking at it, and I sent them a draft, had some comments come back, which was good. And again, by the end of the day today, I will have all the 90 bills off to them.
Do we, do we still have anything pending that might come up in the first special session?
There's a couple of bills, and I'm looking at them, there's about 10 bills, but they basically are the tax rate bills, but they're really not going anywhere because the House already signed it. So chances are they're just, unless somehow they bring them back, they signed it, died, and more than likely, they'll just roll them over and have them refile again in the second special, or third, or fourth, or perhaps even fifth.
When do you think there'll be explanation of SB 17? I mean, when you think they'll finish with the matrix and everything?
Seventeen is done for the, yeah. These bills are here, are done already. Yes, there's, I've just provided you some brief information on them to look at and get an idea of what we're doing. Our deputy chancellors and their staff will look at them a little closer along with me and find other provisions that are in there. I just, I could overwhelm you with, you know, 17 and 18 that have various other provisions that we need to look at, but a lot of them, again, don't pertain, but nonetheless, we may have to just answer them anyway, just to say, yes, we are, no, we're not doing that because it's asking for rule and doesn't exempt anyone.
These pertain, they'll pertain to all of us equally, so as I said, TAC will be in the middle of it, Texas Association of Community Colleges, they'll be, they're on it all the time, and they will roll out some information to us, and Dr. Carter's tagged in with them, so you'll get that.
And just to add, the Texas Association of Community Colleges, along with the community college trustees, we all work together as the Government Relations Action Team prior to everything else that rolls out, so I'm involved with them in, you know, either face-to-face meetings or web meetings discussing this legislation.
I really appreciate your comments. From when you first started, we used to get pages and pages and pages of information.
Yes, I was kind of invited not to overwhelm you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, the chancellor has some board documents.
I say overwhelm them. Dr. Carter said, don't do that. Thank you, Dr. Carter. This next session, we are getting ready to embark on our reaffirmation, and one of the things that Dr. Garrett has got to pull together are all of the board documents that pertain to us, and they, we've looked at them, and they all have got a lot of work to be done. But to start the process, and she's got to have all this done by November 7, is that correct, Dr. Garrett?
Really before then.
Before then, okay. Yeah, because we've got to submit this. When they come in here and do a visit, and if they don't come in, they do it virtually, they'll be looking at these policies to see if the policies are actually what we're doing and not doing. So we've got to clean them up. They haven't been cleaned up a long time. I think the last time was maybe Bill Levy did it back when he was in that office. So, but the first three, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and resend us. I need to resend us, we'll bring to a vote next meeting, but Policy Statement and Position Paper on Europe Campus, Document 134, Policy and Position Paper, Pacific Far East Campus, Document 135, Policy and Position Statement on the Navy Campus, Number 270. So a lot of these, some of you weren't even on the board when we, when we ended the Far East Campus, for example, so, but we don't have those campuses anymore. We're trying to move away from the Word Campus. That's a, that's a no-no with the Saks, because they're going to want to look at that as a standalone entity, and we're not, we don't do that. So anyway, bring these to you for a vote next Tuesday so we can get those out. Those are the simplest ones, we don't even have to look at them. The rest of them will have, will have some eyes and ears on that. We may have to set up the workshop a little bit differently, maybe in a different room to where we can, where we can get together and talk about the wording of each of those, okay? And that gets to be pretty lengthy, so we'll take them as fast as we can. It may, may take some overtime with us, but they've got to be done, so, okay?
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Anybody here has a chancellor?
Good afternoon, Chancellor Yanopoulos, Chairman Towers, and Board of Trustees. On behalf of the CTC Foundation Board, I present two nominees for membership to the CTC Foundation Board. Each of the candidates has completed a nomination application and was submitted to our nomination chair, which is Dr. Jim Anderson. The applications were then provided to the nomination committee for review and approval. The approval from the nomination committee was then submitted to the CTC Foundation Board for approval, and at our last CTC Foundation Board meeting held on Thursday, May 25, 2023, the board approved the nominees as presented. The first nominee is Ms. Mary Sabina. Ms. Sabina is the president and owner of Full Spectrum Billing in Hocker Heights. In 2020, she received her certificate in human resource management from Central Texas College. She has served on multiple committees and boards in the community, to include Garden of Hope, in which she is the current board secretary, the Advent Health Foundation Board, Coppers Cove Leaf Board, and she has assisted with the USO and Heritage House Board of Directors. The second nominee is Ms. Bernice Emmons. Ms. Bernice Emmons is the graduate, a graduate of Colleen High School, and she attended Central Texas College, majoring in business. Bernice is a lifelong resident of Colleen. Her employment background includes owner and operator of Chance Cleaners, and owner and operator of the family businesses, B.A. Emmons Construction, E. Construction, Spare Time, and Car Wash Barn. She enjoys serving in her community. Her community and service includes Board of Reefs for Vets, Vol. Her community and service includes Board of Reefs for Vets, volunteer for over a decade with the Food Care Center of Colleen, and serves as the treasure for the Ellison School Booster Club for EHS Gulf as well. She has been a community advisor liaison for the Colleen Independent School District as the main campus representative for Patterson Middle School. I thank you for this opportunity to present two spectacular individuals on behalf of the CTC Foundation Board, and we believe that they will be assets to our board. Do you guys have any questions regarding the two nominees? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Deleon?
Good afternoon, distinguished board members, Chancellor Yanopoulos, guests, colleagues, and friends. Our CTC Gatesville Office requests to purchase textbooks totaling $198,887.25 for incarcerated CTC students located at the Gatesville Prison units. The TDCJ modification of Contract M011 for the fiscal year 2023 was increased to $684,500. We have obtained approval by the TDCJ for the book order requests, and will purchase the books from the CTC bookstore. The CTC Gatesville Office recommends the purchase of the textbooks funded by TDCJ to replace out-of-date and worn books.
Questions? So where is this money coming from? Because this is all I got in my package, this. So is any of this $198,000 coming from us or through TDJC?
The Department of Criminal Justice. It's all TDCJ money.
Okay, so it's none of our money then?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so very much.
Mr. Barton?
Title IX report? But it's Mr. Murphy. You call Mr. Barton.
Oh, Mr. Murphy. I'm sorry, sir. My apologies.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Chancellor, board members. Here this afternoon to give you the second reporting period, Title IX reporting, which ran from January 1st, 2023 to May 31st, 2023. As you can see from the handout, we had a total of seven reports that fit the criteria for a Title IX violation. Of those seven reports, one was investigated, and six were dismissed for falling outside the scope of Title IX or at request of the complaintant. The one that is currently under investigation, that investigation is wrapping up as we speak. And then we had one from the previous reporting period, which that investigation finally completed, and we're moving into the second phase of the Title IX process. Subject to any questions?
Who conducts the investigations?
So I have a team of two investigators, one on the employment side and then one on the student side. And they have been trained in Title IX process, and they go through and conduct those investigations for me.
So there's no outside independent that comes in and does the Title IX?
No, sir.
So I'd like to tally on what he was just... So you say you have one internal and one student investigator?
One on the student's side or employee.
Okay, but they're not actually a student?
No, sir.
Okay. Community college, yeah, and it's like, man, you're always replacing that person every one to two years. Okay, got it.
And then...
I'm tracking that.
And then many would see this, the number of seven as a high number, but on the risk side, and then from a Title IX perspective, that's actually good. It shows that people have trust in the program, and they're coming forward to speak on it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to do anything with Title IX, but you have.
This is for renewal of our banking services agreement with Bank of America. I don't expect it to go over 50, but it's, it's around 35,000 a year now. It's transaction-based, so if it does, we're covered. So I'll bring that next week. It starts September 1st.
How many years have we had that contract?
Too many.
It's been a...
It's been here ever since I've been here.
It's...
You were here before me years ago.
So can you explain it a little bit?
The contract?
Yeah.
Well, they channel our wire transfers, all our, clear all our checks, all our e-checks.
So, so how does that pertain to House Bill 2558 from the 87th legislative session? Which restricts public institutions from using facility, using banking services of companies that don't...
Yeah, so you're not supposed to boycott Israel, you're not supposed to boycott Second Amendment rights, energy companies, so on and so forth. So to that effect, we did an RFP 1911 back in 2019 for this. That was prior to that law. Since that law changed, we've actually been working with our provider, Bank of America, and have worked for them to provide what's called a certification statement, and Ms. Briggs helped me with that, so that they acknowledge that they will not do those things per the statutory regulation. So we've had this contract for some period of time. It allows for essentially an eight-year contract with a base and three two-year option periods. We would be moving into the second option period at this point. And so to answer your question about how do we ensure it's via that certification statement?
So we won't violate Texas law then?
No, and actually, in some sense, Texas law requires that they make that statement. They even went a step further, and I think are part of a advocacy group now that makes sure that they're not going to violate those statutory requirements.
Will we even get a copy of that?
I can have one provided for you.
The verification?
Yes.
Yeah, once I, yeah, we'll be signing that, and we'll get that to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Chancellor. Good questions. Somebody else?
They also provide us a credit card, right?
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure that, just obviously, when we get to the point of redoing this, let's make sure our credit card holders for all these quote-unquote campuses were disregarding, that those names are taken off the list, that they can't sign stuff that we don't know about. Because we had a lot of charges on that credit card over the years to support these three campuses. Some of them were kind of questionable in my mind. We've looked at it several times, and Doug looked at it over and over and over again, but just make sure that we get a clean break on this.
But it's a good company. We've had good relationships with them.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Armson?
We have a exterior steam line supplying heat to the campus center here that has a leak. So you probably won't notice it right now when the temperatures are close to 100 degrees, but we may notice it when it gets a little cooler outside. So we evaluated a number of different options to go ahead and look at getting repaired, purchasing a standalone boiler, and so the decision that we made was to go ahead and look at purchasing a new gas hot water boiler that would be installed rather than replacing the exterior steam line. The steam line flows on the entire north side of the campus center between the building as well as the little brick street out there. It would create a significant amount of damage and disruption. And so to avoid that, and actually, the less expensive option is to go ahead and look at replacing it, abandoning it where it is, and replacing the heating system with a new gas boiler. We had a small leak actually on the east side, and we thought that that was the extent of it, which we actually repaired sometime towards the beginning of the year. And with this one here, we felt like we just needed to move in a different direction. The total cost of the project is going to be roughly, will not exceed $230,000. That includes a 5% contingency just for any unforeseen items. The expected repair time is the end of August. It takes about four weeks to go ahead once we give approval to Brant, who is the company we're recommending to perform this work. They are a buy board, on the buy board purchasing cooperative, and it's, once the boiler is purchased, it'll take about four weeks and then the installation. So we certainly believe if we can give more approval, that we should be able to get it completed before the end of the fiscal year. So with that, we will be bringing a recommendation to award Brant Companies the contract to replace the, or add a new gas hot water boiler, not to exceed $230,000.
Question? Thank you, sir. Ms. Mars?
I am presenting your yearly cybersecurity training. And so why are we doing this training? Basic cybersecurity training is mandated by the state of Texas, by the Texas Administrative Code, the TAC. The chancellor has named April as our cybersecurity awareness month. And so all the employees at Central Texas College, by the end of April, need to have that cybersecurity training completed. Your participation fulfills the state requirements. And throughout this brief training, or actually at the end of this brief training, we will have a question and answer period. So we are all responsible to protect CTC confidential data and information resources. Your partnership is critical in the strategies that we have set forth at the institution. If you would like to review our policy, it's policy, HR Policy 294. You can find that on the HR website. You can also find it on the IT website online. And also, if you happen to go to the IT departmental website, we do have an IT security website. We keep you updated with any threats that we want you to be concerned about. There's terminology out there, and we also have the policies on that website also. So confidential information is that information that needs to be protected from unauthorized disclosure or public release based on state and federal laws and other legal agreements. And this is through the TAC Code 202.1. And that includes things that are personally identifiable to individuals and others, and that includes things like names, social security numbers, date of birth, mother's maiden name, biometric data, things such as your fingerprints, retina, iris images, identification, numbers and routing codes, things like routing numbers to bank accounts and telecommunication access Also includes sensitive information, and that's information that can lead to a breach of data systems protections and any controls that we have here at CTC. That includes things like your account credentials, so usernames and passwords, information regarding the structure, configuration, and security controls that we have here at CTC, and policies and procedures needed to gain access to our resources, information that is considered trade secrets for an organization, intellectual property, certain types of research data that we have here, and any other information that our organization considers private and does not make, want to make available to the public. And so for acceptable use, the state of Texas considers information resources to be valuable and strategic assets that need to be carefully managed and used. And so that policy actually contains the following. It ensures compliance with any policies that we have here at CTC, establishes prudent and acceptable practices regarding use of our information resources, and educates individuals who may be using our resources. We also have privacy policy here, and those are mechanisms used to establish and limit the limits and expectations for users at Central Texas College who use those information resources. Internal users should have no expectations of privacy here at CTC. So basically, what that means is that if you're using a CTC device, it is actually a CTC device and not used for personal use. So some of the risks that are associated with using our resources here at CTC include sensitive and confidential information and data being released out to the public, theft, accidental disclosure, maybe printing out a student report that might have some sensitive information on there and maybe leaving it laying somewhere. Software theft, intellectual property theft, unauthorized access and use, and hardware theft. And some of the possible impacts for that include reputational damage, financial loss, interruption in critical services, and compliance fines and sanctions by regulatory institutions or agencies. And these are kind of all tied in together. So usually, if you have one, it usually is impacted by all of those. So CTC does have authorized software that we allow on our computers and other devices here. And so if any individual or department wants to purchase or use any type of software on the computer, they need to contact our IT department and get with them to see if those, the software applications, things like that, are in compliance with our acceptable use policies. The software needs to follow any type of licensing or copyrights that are available also. A lot of times, you will find that there are software that have free or personal or consumer or trial basis out there, and usually those are supposed to be used by individuals and not by an organization. So if you do see things like that, usually they do have to have some type of licensing. So software license purchases and related contract documents need to be approved and authorized by IT, and in some cases, they need to be licensed at the college level. That includes our systems for student access, such as UCI and Colleague. They can also be shared among different departments or out there for one particular department, such as for disability support services. They use JAWS a lot of times for their students. And there is prohibited software also. Our IT safety engineer will have, security engineer will have a list of those prohibited items, but they can include things like hacking tools, software that proxies the authority of an individual for gaining access to somebody's login or account, and software that instructs or enables a user to participate in any activity considered a threat to local, state, or federal And so what are some of those threats? They include phishing, sphere phishing, phishing, smishing, and farming. And so probably the one that you've probably heard about is phishing, and this is emails that are designed to trick you into giving away your credentials. You've seen probably emails that have come from... You've seen probably emails that have come from banks, come from the IRS. You know, a lot of times they will not be from those particular agencies. But they are from individuals that are trying to get you to click on a link, possibly download a virus onto your system or to give away your credentials. So your username and password. And if you responded to any of these emails, contact our IT help desk. Then immediately go and change your password. And the help desk can kind of instruct you on what else to do, next steps after that. If you do get one of these emails, you're not sure who it came from. Usually you can just go out there, identify it as probably a phishing attempt. Don't click on any links and then just delete it. Also delete it from your deleted folder to make sure that you don't have that anymore and no further action is needed. If you're unsure about that, contact the IT help desk. A lot of times you can forward that to the IT help desk also. If you've received security alerts before through email, you might have seen my name on it. So you might be able, you can send that to me and I can forward that to our security engineer. Spear phishing is phishing, but it's targeted to a particular individual or group. So good example would be the end of every semester. Sometimes some of us here will get emails targeted at professors, possibly going out there wanting to sell books back or have a buyback book thing. And a lot of times those aren't legitimate. You know, they will say, you know, if you want your student to go and sell their books back, please click on this link and provide this information or something like that. So those are spear phishing, targeting individuals. Most of them impersonate organizations. So they may look legitimate, but they are not. They might say that they are Amazon. Amazon normally, I think, does not capitalize their logo, but theirs might be capitalized. So there will be little nuances, little differences that you might notice. And this is just a comparison chart for the difference between the two, phishing and spear phishing. For both, there's always a message of urgency for you to act right away. They're usually delivered by email. And they will impersonate other, or legitimate companies. And so the IT division will recommend or does recommend that you protect yourself and our CTC resources from these email scams. So when you do receive email, do not click on any links contained within an email unless you are sure of the sender's identity and expecting the information. Don't open any attachments unless you're certain of the sender's identity. Delete any suspicious email. And again, when you delete it, go to your deleted folder and delete it from there also. Make sure that you keep your desktop, laptop, mobile device updated with antivirus software and any critical updates. Phishing is going to be solicitation for information through your telephone. So mobile phones and also landline phones. And so pretty much on my landline, I still maintain one of those. I do, every once in a while, get somebody wanting to buy my house or somebody wanting to fix my roof or, you know, things like that. And smishing will send out messages through your text messaging system. And I was surprised last week when somebody actually identified me by name and said, hello Angela, please click on the link to go and do some shopping or something like that. And there was a link there. And so that was a text message that I just immediately deleted. There's also farming. And this is going to be, when you're using the internet, a user or website's ability to go out there and collect information about you. And you may have possibly been out there on different websites and maybe gone off the website and returned to the website or maybe a social media site or something like that. And that social media site knows that you possibly went and did online shopping or that you went out there and you accessed the CTC website, you know, and things like that. Because ads will start popping up concerning those. And so farming is the way that they do that. So what you want to do is while you're browsing on the internet, make sure that you watch the different websites that you visit, especially if you're using Google. If you Google a website, make sure that you're looking at the actual URL, the address, when you actually go out there and access or click on that website. We tend to have a tendency to go out there and just click on the first one. But a lot of times you'll see sponsorship like that. So they may not be what you're actually looking for. And farming websites, they are quite sophisticated and sometimes difficult to detect that there might be criminal impersonation of an organization or business. And this is an example here. It's just going out there and accessing Google. But if you look at the website where the red arrow is pointing, it actually is not Google. So for safe computing practices, again, be vigilant about checking the URL. Make sure that you're updating with antivirus software and make sure you update with your critical updates. And so where do our threats come from? Criminal groups, nation states, hackers, terrorist groups, malicious insiders, corporate spies, hacktivists. And why do they go out there and target us for money and profit? Revenge or retaliation? Political gain? Special causes? Hate? National security, whether that be domestic or international? Fun and excitement? So one single vulnerability is all that an attacker needs to get into your system. And again, for incident management, if you, and our procedures for computer security are going to be policy 295. For computer use will be, excuse me, 294. For computer use will be policy 295. And again, you can find this on the IT webpage or the HR webpage. And should you become aware of any type of data security issue, immediately contact the IT help desk. You can contact them at help DESK@ctc.edu or call them at 254-501-3103. And depending on what is happening, you know, if it's a worm or virus infection, give them a call. But if you know of any criminal acts, such as data theft or fraud, also contact them too. They may have to escalate that to another agency. And so our computer use policy again is policy 295. Be sure to check your software and make sure that any software that you put on your computer has the latest patches and that it's appropriate, it's been approved by the IT division. Make sure that any files that you download from the internet or scanned or any type of malware, which is your suspicious and damaging type of malicious software that you can put on your computer. Make sure websites and applications apply with the CTC computer use policy. And all user activity on the CTC resource assets is subject to logging and review. So for internet use, CTC internet and intranet access may be, may not be used for personal gain, commercial gain or political purposes. No CTC confidential or sensitive data may be made public. So if you do have confidential information, such as social security numbers and things like that, make sure that you don't send that to another user through email or using any other type of vehicle. Make sure that it's encrypted. And we do have encryption wizard, which the instructions are on our IT website on how to go out there and encrypt any type of confidential information if you need to send that. All confidential CTC material transmitted over external network must be encrypted again. Electronic files must be retained and destroyed in accordance with state record retention schedules. And incidental use must not result in the direct costs to CTC or interfere with the normal performance of an employee's work duties. So make sure you do your part to fight secure cybercrime. And for those people that are using mobile devices, such as phones and tablets, iPads, make sure that you're using things like pass codes and possibly biometric access. So fingerprint, the fingerprint scanner that might come with your iPad, just in case you accidentally lay it down, somebody cannot go behind you and actually access your device. Maintain up-to-date software, including operating systems and applications. Disable features that are not in use, such as your Bluetooth. So if your Bluetooth is on, but you don't have a watch or headphones or anything else attached to it, then go out there and turn that off. And if you are using those, set those devices to non-discoverable so that people cannot go out there, if they do have those scanners, and actually go out there and find those devices and try to get into your device. Avoid joining unknown Wi-Fi networks. So if you happen to be in a public place, try not to, you know, use the Wi-Fi's. Those are not secure. Don't install apps that you don't need and delete unused apps. And delete all information stored on the device before you give it back to me. So, and if you don't, I will go out there and reset it for you. And don't leave your mobile device unattended. So some of that malicious or malware, malicious software that we have out there includes things like viruses, Trojan horses, key loggers, adware, and ransomware. And so probably some of those that you've heard in the news recently include the ransomware, where somebody will put ransomware on your device and lock up your access, lock up access to your files, and they demand some type of payment before they unlock, lock that for you. A lot of times they don't do that, though. They will go back and try to ask for more. Adware is malware disguised as advertising and used to generate revenue for an advertiser. And a lot of times the scam artist will put that in legitimate websites. You may be looking at the news, but you have all the little pop-ups that come up. If you click on those, a lot of times you will put that adware on your device. And key loggers can go out there and detect what you're typing. Specifically, those people want to go out there and find out your account credentials. So they want to know what your password is and what your username is. And some of the warning signs that you've been infected, increased pop-up messages, sudden appearance of items on your toolbar or even on your desktop, slow and freezing computer, sudden lack of storage, and applications opening without your action, and emails being sent from your account without action on your part. Certain files on your device not opening. And antivirus software that's been disabled without you doing that. And hard drive activity when your computer should be idle. We cut to our question time. First question, is it acceptable to share passwords with IT staff and other trusted individuals?
No.
No. So that one's false. If you do come to the IT help desk, we will actually have you pick out a brand-new 16-digit password or more. Which of the following is suspicious email? Unexpected message from an international prince? Say that he wants to share his inheritance with you? An email from a bank that you haven't used in years, but they claim that you need, they need your account information to process a transaction? Email from a Russian beauty queen looking for an American husband? Or threatening communication from the IRS indicating that my taxes are overdue and they will be pressing charges if I do not log in and provide my information?
All of the above.
Email in my CTC inbox and files that I've created and stored are CTC-owned and provided information resources for my personal use.
False.
False, false. They're not personal. They belong to CTC. And which of the following may be a sign that your device is infected with malware? So slow and freezing computer, increased pop-up windows, applications opening without action on your part, and hard drive activity when my computer is idle? So thank you for the training. It takes all the employees, all of us that are CTC family, to maintain our network and computer security. And just kind of please take these lessons and apply them every day. And if you have any questions, send me an email or contact the IT help desk. We'll be happy to help.
Ms. Mars, thank you for steering us to death, but also affirming that we're in good hands with your protection.
Yes.
Anybody else? I'd be glad to get rid of my phone and over to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angela.
Item 13 is recommended topics for upcoming agenda items or announcements. Ms. Kelly?
Give you advance notice, I will not be here on August 22nd.
27th.
22nd.
22nd.
Yeah, that's one of our board meetings. Okay.
Thanks. Posted on item 19 is Chancellor Yanopoulos' retirement. That'll be conducted by executive board. It's board members, if you'll move to that room, please. please.